So, I guess we can call the meeting to order. I got six o'clock since, but yeah. So establish a quorum. We have four of our five board members here in person. Myself, Connie Jeski, Mary Lee Lawler, and Diane Haywood. I'm Zach Stolo if anybody doesn't know me. And then BJ Hoffman's on the phone. So we have all five of us here, present or over the phone. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. It's not a very lengthy agenda, but it could be a lengthy discussion, so.
I move to group.
Okay. All right, so.
If the other boards or council are holding a meeting, they should do the same. They should call their meeting to order as well.
So should we vote on ours and then I'll let you guys run yours? You guys don't, okay, so then the Board of Supervisors can do theirs. So, all right, so I'll hold, I guess all in favor, say aye, aye. Motion carried, and then we can just say, since BJ's on mute. I don't know if.
I'm here.
Oh, you are here, okay.
I'll call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors together and then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. BJ?
BJ, they're calling the Board of Supervisors meeting to order.
I'm here. Yep, I can barely hear Renee, thank you.
Okay.
And I'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Eldora City Council to order, although right now we lack a quorum. But if someone else shows, we'll, we'll be able to conduct business.
Do you need more help as well?
Okay. Board of Health, you guys have an official meeting?
We've already had our meeting, and I don't know if we're officially a part of this or not, so. Okay, so we'll call the Hardin County Board of Health meeting to order.
Here's our quorum.
And we have a quorum.
Okay. All right, so, guess, as far as our agenda, we approved it. Public comment period. I leave that on there every time in case you want to do anything. So, and then just kind of discussion, I don't think any of us have, I mean, this will be kind of a public forum a little bit. I was asked to chair the meeting, so I'll try to keep things moving, I guess as best I can, but just going to be kind of a broad range discussion. I don't know who all received one of these, but Daryl Meyer, the county attorney, handed this to me as some pieces of information that we could, or kind of ways we can move the meeting along. Then I don't know, do we want to go around and just introduce the different boards? Anybody here in a position of, I don't want to say necessarily authority, but a voting member of one of the boards maybe, or I know Heather's back there too. Maybe she wanted to, right, introduce herself?
Sure, I'm Heather Bobby with the Iowa Department of Public Health. I'm just here as a spectator.
Okay, maybe some questions, and then Judy too?
I'm Judy Spree, interim administrator at Green Belt Home Care.
Okay, I don't know if we want to go around that way.
Daryl Meyer, county attorney.
Greg Risky, city council.
Blake Jones, city council.
Connie Jeski on the Green Belt Board. Mary Lee Lawler, Green Belt Board. Diane Haywood, Green Belt Board.
Lance Cranzo, Hardin County Supervisor.
Renee McClellan, Hardin County Supervisor.
Weren't supposed to be a spectator.
Chris Loughlin, Board of Health.
Mary Pisney, Board of Health.
Erin Budwig, Eldora City Council.
Jeff Hoffman, Board of Health.
Tim Brew, Board of Health.
Joyce King, Board of Health.
Dave Mitchell, City of Eldora.
Erica Allen, City Attorney.
And I'm Dave Dunn, the mayor of Eldora.
All right. So then I'll just read off this sheet that Daryl handed out, just the top background. Kind of why we're here, the City of Eldora gave its notice. I think I received the letter around July 7th, something like that, of their intent to withdraw from the 28E agreement that created Green Belt Home Care. Upon the city's withdrawal on June 30th, 2020, Hardin County will be the only party to the 28E agreement. A 28E agreement cannot exist with only one party. Thus, without a 28E agreement, Green Belt Home Care will dissolve by operation of law on June 30th, 2020. And we're just here to kind of discuss maybe what this could look like going forward and what the different options are. So, I mean, I guess you guys can all read too. There are five options that we have. The city decides not to withdraw from the 28E agreement. The county finds another entity to replace the city as a party in the current 28E agreement. Green Belt Home Care dissolves on June 30th. The free market absorbs Green Belt Home Care, or the county creates a program/department to absorb some or all of the services. So I think that's a pretty, you know, a list that, I mean, I don't know if there's many options outside of that unless someone else here has those. I think those are the ones that have been discussed in the past or considered, especially by the Board of Supervisors, I think. And then the purpose of this meeting would be to enhance communication, try to figure out what everybody wants and what the county needs to the city and the county under the circumstances. Explore the options and then, yeah, be fair to and realistic with employees, clients, and taxpayers. And obviously, we can't take any binding action because I don't think any of us had any actionable items on the agenda tonight. So I don't know if, who wants to take it from here. I mean, I'll kind, like I said, kind of lead the meeting, but as the Green Belt Home Care board members, I don't really have any say in what happens going forward. So we can try to lead it and answer questions. It's kind of how I see our role tonight.
Well, the city did get notice that, that your patient census is down. And the result of that has been some economic problems. And that Green Belt has borrowed against its line of credit. And I'm recalling that Green Belt has either discussed or has taken action to reduce some expenses through some personnel actions. And so I guess mostly what I'm wondering is, is this really out of the ordinary for Green Belt? I would assume that the patient census fluctuates from time to time, and you will have slow times and then you will have busy times. Is that the expectation of the board that this will pick up again? Is there any thing you can point to for the low patient census over the last couple of months?
It's just been a few weeks, actually. And the reason is, all of those clients went to a higher level of care. Like either a really higher level of care or needed to be in a nursing home. It's not that anybody left because they were unhappy with any services. And this time of year, it's pretty common. And we're going to be approaching the time of year where it will increase. You've got the flu season, pneumonia season, unfortunately, ICE, people fall. We'll be having those kind of injuries come on board. It's not decreased a great deal. I'm just being proactive. We do know that not, it's pretty common with all home health agencies. As far as reimbursement with Medicaid, it's difficult. Iowa Total Care has been really difficult getting funds from them. They're starting to pay, so that has helped. And the first of the year, we're going to have a different type of billing for Medicare, which is going to affect every home health agency. But I spoke with our consultant, and she doesn't think we're going to be as affected as badly as some other agencies. And as far as the line of credit, we could pay that off right now. But I don't want to be back and forth, you know? And we've only had to do it once.
So is this meeting really, was this brought about because of very real concerns about the financial condition, or more getting maybe ahead of what's going to happen next June 30 when the city withdraws? And the other thing I wanted to mention there, I think the three parties are the county, the city, and Green Belt Home Care. So if the city drops out, you've still got two. Have you received advice to the contrary, that you can't continue if the city drops out?
No, Green Belt Home, well, so from the discussions we've had, and the knowledge that I have is that the county cannot create a nonprofit and be the, or a government entity of any kind cannot create a nonprofit company and be the sole owner. So one single government entity. So the county cannot be the sole owner of Green Belt Home Care and have it exist in the way that it is. So Green Belt Home Care would then dissolve as is, and then the county would be required to at least then take the public health aspect under its wings, and then the home care could, is what it is.
So as we head into kind of the budget season in a couple of months, the county kind of wanted to have this open discussion and thought maybe, you know, the city might change its mind, yeah? Or find some other way to have this relationship in a way that maybe not be as much of a burden to the city.
Yeah.
If we were to change bylaws where you aren't responsible for 25%, would you then be interested in staying in?
I'd certainly consider it. You know, we haven't discussed it. We need some more background. Or I was thinking maybe we'd be a 1% owner or something like that. Or, you know, if you need us to keep the entity alive, because I think it's functioned well for a long time now, 20 years or more or something. Provides a very valuable service to the county and even outside the county. So I'd hate to see us upset that apple cart too much.
Is this something that, this is more for the supervisors? Is this something that you would want to look forward to doing as taking Green Belt Home Care under your wing for the county? But maybe if we pull out, you won't be able to?
Financially, if you pull out, we may not be able to keep it the way it is. So if you guys stay in, it can still continue to run the way it is.
Even if we drop down to hyperfederal 1%?
Yeah.
And when you say operate the way it is, Green Belt would not exist. The services, the county would have to create a department, a program, and
It would probably be down.
Staff those services. The Green Belt itself, the entity, would dissolve once, after June 30, if the city is out.
We would probably be able to fund the entire organization as it stands right now.
So my question for that would be, then how could you be a 99% owner? What if something happened financially to keep the organization still existing as it is?
If you were to move, if you were to move Green Belt under the county with, you'd then go under the county insurance plan, you'd have all the other things that the county has. Financially, I don't think we could take that, especially with the way the state did with their 3% cap. We may not even have the capacity to take it. But if it operates the way it is, we have the capacity to operate the way it is.
They have implemented a cap on your county budget?
It's going to be ugly. They did to the city as well.
Dave, I know you don't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So how much is the city of Eldora? What is their 25% of this? Do they support a 25%?
Not in current funds, to my knowledge. I think when it was set up 20 years ago, the city and the county, and at that time, contributed some funds. And over the years, it has been pretty self-sufficient in terms of reimbursements from third parties. I know our EMS service has suffered lately from Medicaid cutbacks in terms of our reimbursements. And so I'm anticipating, you know, some, some issues along that line for the city. And I suppose some of those are carrying over to the.
If the city doesn't put any money in, what are you gaining by dropping out?
Well, we're concerned about our potential exposure. If they do need a subsidy, I'm not sure the city's in a position to do it.
And we can, we can budget your debt service. So if you did go into debt too far, we can budget there. They didn't cap that one. But just to operate, they put a 3% hard cap on it. Increase. And by taking this entity is a tremendous.
So you can't increase your budget by more than 3%? And clearly, when you're adding a
Large number.
Yeah, yeah, multimillion dollar.
If I understand right, you would not be able to provide the same insurance and things that the county has? It would have to be as it is now?
If it's in the 28, it's still under that board. And they can, and they can set up how they want. The county, everybody's on the same.
Yeah, and you would not be able to financially.
I don't think it would be good. We don't have the budgets, but that's what I'm projecting.
Last year's request was that we subsidize the, we subsidize the benefits. And then that was kind of what led to the discussion. Well, if we can't subsidize the benefits, then let's try to make them county employees or help the, or get out so that the county can help maintain. And then that's where we're at today, so.
And this program's larger just than the county's responsibility is. And we would have to weigh that. And I don't think anybody wants to lose the programs we have.
No.
But what if we're forced to? And that's, you can only do what you can do.
And the county has a statutory obligation to provide public health services. Are those spelled out, which public health services you are to provide?
I believe she would have that answered, yes.
There's very minimum. It's assuring that there are immunization, audits performed, communal disease follow-up. Those are very basic.
Nowhere near the array of services provided by Green Belt Home Care.
That's a county choice.
So the 28E is important to try to keep. But if we did have another county or another entity that would like to merge instead, I could see us pulling apart at that time and recreating it. And I don't think it would be very good at this point to dissolve it. That's my opinion.
Were there talks with Franklin and?
We had Franklin that would like to talk to us. I don't know that we've talked to them yet.
I was told that that could go through and they made some changes or something there, and they weren't interested. No, I haven't heard them say no.
Haven't heard anything recently.
And Grundy was, we were coming over, the home care was kind of starting to migrate into Grundy because they did black services?
I think they were, no.
They, as far as I'm aware, Grundy County was not interested in sharing the services through their, the county nursing or.
Grundy doesn't even have any nursing. They don't have a nurse even in their public health department.
I think they have two.
Two gals that are not nurses. So, yeah, we have expanded into Grundy County. We had to get permission from Centers of Medicare and Medicaid. And so we do provide home health services in Grundy County. Because, yeah, they have no nurses. And I know home.
Marshall Town, excuse me.
Yeah.
I'm just asking about Marshall Town and if there's any possibility of.
They have Unity Point, and they have Iowa Home Care that services them.
But that's not part of the county.
No, that is not part of the county. Those are private agencies.
I believe they have two employees.
The county property or the?
One, they have one employee.
The county?
Yes.
But these others are.
They do have public helpers, but I think just one.
Okay. No, you don't more than I do, whatever.
They have like a 1.3 FTE. And they are county employees, and they are not affiliated with.
But Unity Point, does that do all of their home care, or is that?
Unity Point at Home provides their certified home care services.
And I think they were relying on my kids as well to do some work. I could be wrong on that, but that's what I was thinking.
So the city would be willing to stay in if they only had a 1% liability? Can you go, is that what you're saying? You can go back to your, and ask them?
I think the council or the city would be happy to discuss options so long as, so long as we can reduce or eliminate our financial exposure in the event of, you know, that you need subsidy.
I don't anticipate that, but you don't know what's going to happen in the future. But we've made a lot of cuts because I'm, I'm kind of frugal anyway. So we've made cuts that I, we were paying for things that I, they really weren't necessary. And so we're doing well with making those cuts. And like I said, with the holdup with reimbursement with Iowa Total Care, and we've had difficulty with VA now too, because they're outsourcing their payment to United Healthcare. So all of those payments have really been behind. And if we would have received all those payments as we should have, I never would have had to touch that line of credit. So I don't foresee us having any issues. And it's, like I said, the clientele, the census, I think, will increase.
Have you received payment from Iowa Total Care?
We've received, we're starting to receive some, yeah.
Are they four or five months behind or something?
They're quite a way, yeah, you haven't received any in your.
I received one payment in August from them. And I think that's it in my business. And we started July 1st billing, or I probably started August 1st billing them, but that's two months ago.
What is the contractual arrangement with these payers? Is there, are they obligated by a certain time to pay? Or we?
It's not just us, it's every home health agency. Yeah, I don't know what their time, I mean, it's the state, so.
If they're in violation of their contract, then we need to take legal action because it's putting us at a vulnerability. So I would implore that the board review those contracts. And if it's a bad contract, then maybe we should go to the powers that be and say, you gotta abide by this. You know, it's putting us into a financial situation that.
Well, you can sure look at that. I'll have our, we have the contracts. I'll have the gals look at them. But I don't know if they put a timeframe on their contracts when it comes to, do you have any timeframe on yours?
They do, I don't see, I don't, I have an email somewhere I could look. I mean, with my contract, I think Medicare, I mean, the standard, if, for, I mean, this is chiropractic, so it's probably completely different than home care. But when I send in my claims, I have, they have three weeks. If you send them electronically. Iowa Total Care wasn't accepting electronic claims. And then they say they don't have a timeframe. Because that's my choice to send them a paper claim instead of electronic, even though they didn't have it set up.
Eldora EMS gets paid in 30 days for Iowa Total Care.
Okay.
We started submitting our claims electronically September 1st.
We do all ours electronic too, but.
But they didn't accept electronic until September 1st.
Yeah.
And they mandated you to start doing that, and they don't accept paper claims anymore.
Yes. And they denied claims before September 1st to take electronic.
So what is the ballpark figure? What is our AR currently? How many days out?
I, I don't know. Do you have any of the finances from Marty?
I have as of August. Marty sent me an email before. She didn't attach them, but.
Sorry, I didn't know I needed to bring, what I needed to bring along.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't, some of these.
Well, that would, it makes no difference what it is. But it does, because if you're going 90, 120 days out, some of them better be on top of that, even if it means taking a trip to the corporate office. Because we can't exist with, no business can exist with 90 days out. You know, we're not a bank. And so we got legal representation that we need to look at. You know, what recourse do we have to come back on these insurance entities? You know? Maybe nobody has ever broached that conversation. But any business, if you're not getting paid, you need to take action.
I mean, this is a different number than, the balance sheet that she shows, that shows is $20,122.68 in accounts receivable, but I think that's more. Okay, here we go. It was up to $284,042.55. That's total. Like if we're talking from Iowa Total Care, the number at our last meeting that was said to us was somewhere in the ballpark of $40,000 to $50,000.
Okay, so my point to be made is, we have contracts for third-party services being delivered, PTOT and speech. Do we pay them on a timely fashion?
Yes.
Even though we're not getting paid? So those contracts have to be reevaluated with whoever we're providing is providing our speech. We'll pay you when we receive payment. I'm just asking the board, are you doing, looking at these things to cut the expenses? Because if you're paying, last month, the physical therapy was upwards to $25,000. Well, if you're not getting that for three months, there's your line of credit right there. Not trying to micromanage, but I think you have to be looking at that profit-loss statement a lot closer and what your contracts are.
If some of those things were buttoned up and the accounts receivables were received more timely, would that kind of encourage the city to stay in this?
Well, if you remember, if we look back historically, and any of the other Eldora council people can chime in here. But there was a strong consensus that the City of Eldora never wanted to get out of Green Belt. We were asked by the previous administrator and board members of Green Belt to get out. And we felt like a stepchild, and finally, you know, if we're not welcome, we, we were told publicly that, you know, we want the city out. And so we, we got out. Well, now look where we're at.
Part of that reason, though, was we needed financial assistance. And it wasn't necessarily appropriate for residents of Eldora to be taxed on the city level and on the county level.
And we agreed with you on that.
Yeah, so I mean, it wasn't that we wanted anybody out, but we also wanted to make sure, we kept talking about economic development and whatever. And, you know, having such a residence taxed twice in a city for the same service is not going to be economic development. So I think that's, that's what drove, you know, trying to figure out then how this should look.
Yeah, well, and the other factor too is we thought staying in would help convince them to remain in the clinic. We appreciate having him as a tenant. We've been told that, you know, they like the facility and where we are. So that was a part of the consideration, wasn't it?
Right. But we have addressed a lot of the, you know, accounts receivable in the past. And when you're dealing with those people, the only other thing you can do is not serve the client because we can't get our money. And you can't do that. So.
You don't want to do that.
I would hope not. But I, I think we will still try to get those funds as fast as we can. But there are, a lot of that's without, not within our control. Because it's all, I mean, because they've even gone down to the state and talked to representatives. And you just don't get any. It's not a priority for them. Pardon? Because you don't have a contract that states that? So you can't hold on to anything.
Even with the contracts, they have a pile and they only work on it so fast.
They can only run it so fast.
If they put a pile on top of that, you're still at the bottom. I mean, it's that way with juvenile detention, that way. There's 60, 90 days out, easy to be a million dollars behind is nothing.
To them.
But with the detention center, that's a common number to be that far out.
I know, but I mean, for the ones staying in this.
And that's how they operate.
Yeah, that's right.
So to catch myself up to speed from my position in Iowa, what does Green Belt, what is their overall end goal? I mean, we have options laid out here that, but what does, what does Green Belt Home Care, what type of relationship do they want to keep with Eldora? Without giving factual numbers or actual numbers saying, we want you here 25%? I mean, do they want Eldora involved still?
We just. We just, as far as I'm concerned, we just want to maintain the service to customers and to the clients. However that looks, and however we can do it, can also maintain, you know, liability.
And what would Green Belt say their best course of action would be to, I mean, I understand it's still weighing on the city's shoulders whether we want to stay in or not. My, my vote, my voice would obviously favor what the county and Green Belt sees the best course of action to be, because I'm not, I'm not an expert in this field. So I rely on the experts here to give me the information of what they see as best fit.
Well, this is the first that I've heard that we could even keep it going with the 1%. So I, I mean, I think, you know, we as a board need to consider that too. I mean, that's, any way we can keep the 28E agreement going and be viable, that's...
I mean, my...
I think, I think it would be best if, if you want to keep it going, if we kept you in at the 1%, and that's correct, we'd keep 28E alive, right? Oh, I was thinking maybe, yeah, but that's fine. The attorneys. I know you're in the other part. So by keeping 28E alive, we can always actively keep looking for another entity to join. And if we found one that would merge with the Green Belt, then you guys can pay it out again. But I, if you don't find anybody, this thing's going to be done July, July 1st, June 30th.
I mean, my opinion was, is that we need to keep the services for the people of Harten County. How does, I mean, how does that look? Because do you want, you know, from the other options I've heard is, yeah, I mean, option number four, the free market absorbs Green Belt. I mean, that's, do you want some of the for-profit companies that are around here to come in and be serving the clients? I mean, is that have a good reputation for working in these...
Probably what's going to happen.
I know. So I mean, what do we have to do to keep the quality of nursing? You know, when the administration change happened in April, my immediate thought was we needed Judy to help be the interim administrator, because she was hands down the most qualified nurse in there to keep that service going. Because that's what keeps Green Belt Home Care strong. You know, and that's the most important thing, is the care for the people of the community. You know, and that's, I guess, got to be the end goal. Because if that's not the end goal, what are we even doing? Shut it down today. You know, I mean...
And we do have excellent staff, and we're well-staffed. When we go to meetings, we were just one last week, every other home health agency is really struggling to get nurses. We probably have maybe one too many nurses, but that's a good problem. Yeah, financially, it's a little difficult right now, but you never know when someone may decide to relocate or take another position. And every one of our nurses are very good.
And it's hard to keep the nurses.
Yes.
We don't have a good insurance plan. Especially in rural areas, I think, too.
Yes. There's not a large employment pool out there to draw from. I mean, you, I think we're really fortunate.
I was under the understanding that the nurses wanted more help with their insurance, and that's why going with the Haren County and the county benefits would benefit them. Are they willing to be satisfied with their current?
I haven't heard anybody dis... A lot of the nurses have spouses or someone else that they use their benefits. I myself just had to start using them this month because my husband retired. And it's really, just for myself, it's not a lot more than I'd be paying, health insurance is expensive. If, it doesn't matter, you know, really for Green Belt, yeah, it's quite a bit. And I get it, you know, some of the gals are single, it's a little more difficult for them. But I haven't had any of them come to me and complain, unless someone here knows of somebody that has said anything.
My wife works there, so I, we're in understanding. We use my health insurance through military and all that stuff, but I still try to keep up on that. I know a lot of the gals, most of the gals that work out there. And a lot of them do say, yeah, they are a little steep, but the overall environment that's provided by the employer, by Green Belt, by everybody else, far outweighs that higher cost. It's my understanding that the employers are out there, because that's the job that they like to do, and they enjoy the bosses that they have. So they are willing to pay them just a little bit more to have that better environment.
And situations change. I think back when we first began this discussion almost, not quite a year ago, you know, maybe there was more turnover at that time, and maybe that was the reason. Maybe there were other reasons, and that was the reason that was given, you know, in an exit interview. You know, so, I mean, there's, who knows? You know, I mean, when your employees change, and, you know, maybe, you know, maybe everybody's happy where they are now, and maybe it's not as big of an issue as it was a year ago, when we were nervous about turning over, you know, and maybe it was the same positions, but a couple nurses every month. And it wasn't necessarily that, but, I mean, there was, we'd come to our meetings, and there was usually some staff turnover, and that hurts a business financially, too.
I mean, one of the things I kind of remember when I was on the board was that we were, that Green Belt was losing a lot of employees, like, to the hospital, in health halls and whatever. And it was because the pay was lower, at Green Belt, and the benefits cost more. And I think the salaries were adjusted, if I remember correctly. So the pay is now more comparable, and the benefits are probably a little bit higher, but maybe it's not enough to make them leave now. But I do think salaries were, were adjusted somewhat over the past year or whatever.
Another thing we added was flexibility. You know, I was like, I came from an arena where you could work 312s or 410s, and here it was 58s, which some nurses still like to do. But there are a lot of nurses that have jumped on board to the 410s. They want to be home that extra day with their kids, or, and I think that flexibility has improved morale and maintained the staff we have.
As the board, I think we've really tried to work hard to mimic the county's handbook and benefits as we can, or try to get as close as we can incrementally. So that was our goal, to align ourselves as much with the county's employees as we could within our budget. So as a board, that's one of our goals, and we've been working towards that. And we'll continue to keep working towards that, just because it makes sense.
Zach, going back to something you said, the change in April with the administration. I know that I have asked our city administrator, even the mayor, to find out, because we are still owner, what happened to the administrator of Green Belt Home Care. And what I was told, that it was a closed session, and that information cannot be divulged. But, and I'm going to ask our city attorney, I think there's attorney privilege that can review that closed session, and then our city attorney can give the council a summary of what happened in that meeting. Is, would that be possible? Because we still don't know what happened to the, the Green Belt administrator. And being that we are still owner, and potentially, there could be some litigation, we don't know. It's, nothing has been shared with us, and that's something that I think really needs to, your board owes it to the city and to the county. And then I also understood that one of the board members was asked to leave a closed session. Why was that necessary?
I mean, I don't feel comfortable talking about the closed session. And all of my conversations through this, I've been asked by every person that has a stake in this, is that it takes, requires a court order to release anything that was said in that closed session. So I'm not going to divulge any information that was brought up about that. I can't legally. Morally, would I like to, because I don't like to have the secret, and I feel like people are judging our decisions with no knowledge. And I don't really like that.
So you're saying that our city attorney would have to either do a subpoena or request legally to get a summary of that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, you could pursue it, a legal action, and I can't give it to you. Without opening, without opening up Green Belt Home Care for a lawsuit from someone involved in the, you know, so, me not saying anything is protecting you, is protecting your liability. I know it doesn't seem like that, because you want the information, but, I mean, you could open up Green Belt Home, if I told you right now anything that was said in there, that would open up Green Belt to a lawsuit from any of them, you know, and so...
I'd like to have a summary of it, and I want, being all the players are here, I just wanted to make it clear that we, I would like to have a summary of what happened. We may not know all the details, but I do, we have two lawyers here, is how's that process work?
Well, like Zach said, you can ask for a court order. That's one option. So I guess I, the city and, you know, and I could talk about maybe coordinating some way to peel that back and take a look and see if there's any way we can find out.
Yeah, it's, it has been frustrating from the potential of economic exposure to us, you know, not knowing what it's about. Anytime you let a administrator go, that's tough. So I think we would like to, to know something about it. So we could ask our attorney to contact you, Darryl, and maybe work through that.
So, but was it true that if a voting board member of the Green Belt Home Care was asked to leave a meeting when a vote was taken?
I think that happened in the middle of the closed session from my, so I'm not going to speak on that. I mean, I mean, if you get, if you can, when you can get all the information, if that happened, that'll be in there.
And then the other thing is, am I remembering correctly, there's still an audit underway of Green Belt?
There's a state audit, yes.
I think to clarify, you had asked, kind of, you know, what difference does it make in my position? I am in part in agreeance with President Bud, we would like to know, because it has scared our council in the position we are in, the liability that it may hold. However, in summarizing what Connie had said when she came to one of our meetings to discuss that, that both of you gals had been there, it was put out, written on a plate for us. We dropped the ball as the city council, because we had the opportunity to be in that meeting, and we weren't there. I'm not going to lay blame on anybody, but I certainly wasn't there. So if I really wanted to know what happened, I should have been there. But, yeah, I mean, it's just to summarize what the position, at least myself, and probably the majority of the council is, is, you know, I had us spooked a little bit, and thought, well, gosh, what kind of liability we're sitting in? Do we still even want to be here? If we're not privy to that information, why? Well, it's because we weren't there. But, you know, I, I think that would help the council's decision as to what percentage or what stake we would hold in it. But again, I myself, as a council member, dropped the ball by not being in that meeting if I was able to, as a stakeholder, to get that information.
But I don't believe, even if we were there, we would have to leave the meeting.
Was that...
We're not a voting member.
Okay.
You would have been able to come back in for the vote.
Okay. I was getting corrected.
And the actual, the actual...
Connie, our representative, was there, but she... Well, I think I'm, I'm sensing a willingness by our council members here for us to reexamine our role in it going forward. We're going to have to, you know, have attorneys advise us on, on if 1%, a nominal stake like 1% is adequate to maintain, you know, the structure you need to keep it in place. And then we would have to have some arrangement, you know, if that's needed, if 1% is needed, or if there's some other way we can be a member to keep the entity alive. I think we'd be willing to consider that. And then, but I think, you know, minimizing or eliminating our financial exposure probably be a very important part, too. But I'm, I mean, we're, we have a ways to, we have some time to work on it. I mean, speak up if, if you think the attitude among the council would be different, and we don't want to revisit it, to give a notice, and we're going out. But it sounds like a whole series of dominos would start falling if that happens, which would not be good.
I, I would say, when you say you have time, I don't think you have much.
We're going to be doing budgets probably, as a member, for sure.
Well, we start that process, too.
So, so it'd be nice just to know if you were in or out, because that makes a large difference on what we try to start budgeting and then planning for.
I'll ask you, you have the most knowledge of the 28E agreement.
Don't go that far.
Back bylaws. Is there any timeframe that the city has to announce their intent to not withdraw? From what I've read, it, I don't remember any, they have 180 days prior to the start of the fiscal year to announce they want to withdraw.
Right.
But if they want to pull that withdrawal notice back...
What I, what I, I guess what I think would trump their notice to withdraw is reentering a new agreement.
Okay. That's, okay, that would make sense, too, yeah, if you knew.
And if we can achieve that, then their notice would be null, really.
Zach, what, what is the current structure of the board and the terms of the board members? And who's representing who? For clarification for everybody in the room.
Well...
So start with yourself. Who do you represent?
I represent Green Belt Home Care. Because in the last new 28E agreement, there was a, to make it an odd board, it was agreed upon that Green Belt Home Care can appoint a board member, even though they have...
With the approval of the city and county.
With the approval of both boards?
Yes.
Okay, well, if you, I don't know if you guys ever approved me, I guess, but...
And I think there's some particulars there.
Yeah.
What are your terms?
So it's three, two consecutive three-year terms. But the way we understood it, and the way we kind of acted, and I don't know, someone else could say if the bylaws are correct on this or not, because I'm not an attorney, but they were restarted when the new 28E agreement was kind of how it was phrased to us. So I, so we all started when the new 28E agreement came into effect last July 1st, started our time over. I don't know if that would be the correct way to do it, that was the way that it was, which doesn't make much sense, when you're talking about turning over the whole board in six years.
So the point I'm making, Zach, is this is a legal potential implication, that there were votes, there was hires and terminations. And if, if we're not correct on the bylaws and the board and their terms, then some of those votes, potentially, could be null and void. And so I, I ask that the board really look at the terms, who they're representing, and make sure that you didn't create a hiccup here.
That, that wouldn't be the case.
That was all done by lawyers.
Yeah.
I mean, that all went through the legal process.
And, yeah, and none of us have been on the board more than six years. So I know that we wouldn't be a foul of the two consecutive three-year term thing.
Yeah, but we, we didn't make up those bylaws. That all went through legal.
I'm just saying, we have to make sure that we're correct on the bylaws and the terms, and how the people were appointed, and, in order, because if something comes bad, that could really haunt us.
I'm telling you what, I mean, the way it was laid to us by the previous, when we started over last July 1st, it was given to us that here, your terms are starting over again. I don't know whether that's correct or not, that was not my interpretation of it. That's what was...
I don't remember ever coming to the city council for approval.
Well, you would have had to approve Connie. Connie was approved.
This was probably sometime between June and maybe September of last year.
Yeah, it might have happened after July 1st. But, because I remember speaking with Dave, because Connie and I were both city representatives prior to, and they went from two to one.
And I got a letter from...
And he, I don't know how you selected, I don't, doesn't matter. Connie, yeah, Connie was selected there, and then I was asked by Green Belt Home Care to become their representative. B J recently has taken Renee's spot on the board from the Board of Supervisors. And then Mary Lee and Diane are both appointed by the county.
County supervisors.
They're appointed by the county supervisors or the board, and the Board of Health? Do you guys have a, but do you guys have a vote on, do you guys have to approve the members, well?
No.
Okay.
No, they're the one that hold your contract. So you guys work for the Board of Health. They may have that responsibility, but we, we have the appointments to, to the Green Belt Board. And if they wanted to, they could go to some other entity. I don't know why you would, but you could, you have that authority.
So when I was chair of the Board of Health...
So, when I was chair of the Board of Health, twenty-some years ago, when we started, the Board of Health did have a voting representative. But then again, you had North Island Mercy, you had Ellsworth Hospital, City of Eldora, and the county as owners. And so, that was quite a large board. So, I don't know where the Board of Health lost their representation on the board. And I'm not saying it's necessary, but there was a voting member from the Board of Health on the Greenbelt Home Care board twenty years ago.
See, I was under the impression that one of them was. When Diane Rule was on, I thought she was kind of the representative from the Board of Health, but maybe that's incorrect.
Well, the bylaws have been reworked several times since the last twenty years.
Yeah, I'm talking four years ago. That would have been when the hospital was on.
She didn't?
Right, I had that name right?
Aaron, they, they could have been appointed by the Board of Supervisors as one of their appointees, which would be natural. It may not have been in the bylaws. We just think the board's just always appointed somebody from the Board of Health as a board member.
Yeah, I was the, one of the board members as the chairman of the Board of Health at that time. Nobody else was on it.
And then, then you were on Greenbelt Home Care board, appointed by the Board of Health or the Board of Supervisors?
I guess we'd have to dig up the meeting.
Yeah.
We're still at square one. What are we going to decide to do?
Well, we can't decide to do anything because there's no action, but-
He's kind of curious.
Yeah, well, I think we're going to reconsider it. I mean, the council will realize our role.
The county and the city can maybe start, turn to hammer out something that both, both of us can live with.
Yes, in terms of a new agreement, eliminating the financial exposure to the city, and whatever, you know, whatever structure that takes-
Correct.
-we'd consider it.
So, Judy, I had a conversation a couple weeks with you and I know that you had said you've been talking and visiting with Hanson. Is, is anything evolving with Hanson Family Hospital and public health or therapy or-
We care, our county hospital. It seems like they've kind of taken a backseat to the home care. So, is there any new developments with Hanson?
And I don't think they will, because they're part of Mercy One. Mercy One has their own home health. So, I'm sure if they were, didn't do any home health, Hanson Hospital would probably, you know, since they're under that umbrella of Mercy One, they would go with them.
But they're not in Harden County now, are they? Mercy One's-
In, no, no, they are not.
So, are they interested in a therapy contract?
We have a therapy contract with Hanson.
Oh.
We do utilize Hanson and we use Millennium.
Okay.
We use Millennium more than Hanson because Millennium has more employees. They get out to see our clients more quickly than what Hanson is able to because they do have more employees. So, we have a contract with both.
Well, I thought with the new administrator at Hanson, he, he seemed to bring a kind of a fresh breath of air to the, the health care of Harden County. And it's always amazed me that since the Eldora Hospital closed, you know, that Hanson has just kind of always pulled away. And I didn't know that, you know, they are the leader of the health care community in our county. And so, I didn't know if the board has considered sitting down with their board again and try to regroup and get something going. And you, you see all the services that they're providing through the newspaper and media. And so, that's an ongoing thing that I think our board has to constantly be looking at opportunities right in, in our back door. And when's the last time you had a joint meeting with anybody from there? So, it's been a while.
When they left us.
A year and a half when they didn't, yeah, I mean-
Yeah.
But they've been, you know, they've been under some administration change, but I think they're very volatile, too. They don't know what's going on up there. But I know the city administrator has, has met with, I know you have met with Judy and also Julie had met with the new CEO.
And, and I mean, that was fruitful because there was a talk of not contracting with Hanson Family Hospital to do any therapy anymore.
Right.
Because of just different billing and different aspects and stuff like that. And that, after the CEO change in Hanson Family Hospital, got figured out. So, I mean, there's been, there's cooperation now where there might not have been a year ago. But I don't know if they'd be, I mean, they got out of being an owner, so I don't know how willing they would be to have a financial stake anymore. And I don't know, you know, I guess what else can they provide? I mean, would be worth talking, I guess. Can't say what they'd be-
With staffing, contracting, PR and nurse staffing, you know, they have low senses when maybe you're busy and then you, you know, have, have a shared nursing staff because I hear that, you know.
It would be really hard. Home health nursing is extremely different than hospital nursing.
I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah.
I'm not here to tell you how to run your business, but it, you know, I've done healthcare for forty years and when I bring these things up, I never hear this information coming to the council in any report. So, this is good for me to be here to ask these questions. What is the board doing to explore different opportunities of revenue, foundation, fundraising? You know, I brought that up at several meetings and I never hear anything back.
You know, I think a lot, we're focused on trying to look at the future. We didn't know if we were going to have any say in eight more months. So, you're going to make wholesale changes to an organization when we don't know what the powers that, the people who owned the company are going to do? I mean-
It will dissolve.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean-
Unless you guys, unless Eldora stays in, it will dissolve.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, we, I mean, we were going to hire an administrator and then we thought the county was going to take the, over July 1st, 2019. So, then we waited and then we got told that wasn't going to happen because the city didn't give enough time. So, then we worked through hiring an administrator, didn't, that hasn't worked out the way we wanted it quite yet. So, then we're going to wait and try to figure out. Judy's agreed to stay on until, well, yeah, until July 1st, twenty, you know, until at least July 1st, 2020, when we didn't know what was going to happen with the county. And then if it was a county entity, they could figure it out. If we have an agreement from the city, that Greenbelt's going to continue as is, that would make a huge part in us hiring an administrator, because a huge part in the reason we don't have one is because we couldn't tell them what was going to happen July 1st, 2020. So, I mean, as a Greenbelt Home Care board, yeah, we're trying to run this organization, but when we have no clear direction-
Kind of hamstrung under the circumstances, yeah.
I mean, we had a great, great candidate. And I think she was very interested, but when she's not guaranteed a job in eight months, why would she leave where she is?
Too many unknowns.
Yeah. I mean, you can't blame her.
We had no answers.
Yeah, I mean, yep.
So, it sounds like we'll get answers when Eldora brings forward their decision in a very timely manner, which I'd be, yeah, I would be willing to help push that any way I could, so.
Yeah, I mean, we want what's best for the area. And if you want more report, I mean, yeah, you've been coming to the meetings, which is great. But, I mean, when I was the city representative for two years, nobody ever asked me a question from the city. I don't know that, or I was never given a directive of, here's what we want, here's, here's our give and take as your representative on this board. I don't, there's got to be direction from the city, I think, or from the county, you know, if you want Mary Lee and Diane to come give you a heads up or invite us to a meeting and ask us questions. I don't know that. You can give information that we don't know you want.
Make that happen then, Dave? That way, we're not playing twenty questions in, in a setting like this when we can't move forward without our decision?
Remind me when your board meets.
We meet the third Monday. It won't be the third Monday this.
It's Tuesday, the 22nd of October.
Twenty-second is when we planted this one due to-
At twelve o'clock.
-quorum issues and our administrator not being there, but-
Yeah.
I mean, as a, as a, as an owner, the county has, I don't know if it's been forever, but I know we have a member of the Board of Supervisors that actually sits on it.
And gives you boards and commissions and talks about all our different conditions.
So, so maybe that would be your-
The city, I would think your council could, you could appoint one of your council members to the actual board.
And that's how it was, that's how it was?
That was my understanding. If, if I'm not mistaken, it was Meloy, wouldn't it?
No.
It wasn't, I thought it was.
No, it was my, it was my ranking and that was it.
Okay, okay. So, I'm coming in halfway through all of this, so I'm trying to pick up where this all originated. So.
I think I know what I need to know this evening to go forward.
Just a quick question, probably Judy might be about to answer this. Talk about the timeliness of this entire thing. If your staff doesn't have an answer of what's going to happen, how far out are they going to stay before they start looking for another job? Like, are they going to wait till April or May or June? Or, I mean, how soon do you think they need to have an answer to this before they can, so they can make decisions in their lives moving forward?
Yeah, I'm really surprised we've kept everybody. Because nobody's left for, well, for April for sure, which is really unusual for Greenbelt.
So, basically, the sooner you give a decision, the better.
Nobody has said any, yes, definitely. There's, I know that they're concerned.
I give Judy a lot of credit, though, because I think that's the reason there's been a lot of stability, yes.
I really do.
I do, too. And she doesn't hide anything. It's all up front. The staff knows what's going on. They know the budget. They know what concerns we're facing as a board and as the industry as a whole. So, yeah.
We wouldn't be in the position we're in now if it wasn't for Judy.
Thanks, but-
Well, I think the staff feels secure and safe.
Yes.
So, one last question on, did, after reading your email, did you finally get that mileage issue taken care of?
As far as-
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, at the last board meeting that I attended, you said there was some mileage reimbursement, some of our staff were receiving larger checks than their regular paychecks for mileage. And right there, that can be very costly. Did it get rectified?
Yeah. It has been. We've talked to them on a one-on-one basis, not in a group and-
So, you have, the board has not set a policy, the first fifteen miles is on your own, or?
We have, we're actually working on our, because we're not sure where we're going, we are working on our policy handbook, which I was going to bring to the October 22nd meeting.
There is policies set that, and I, I'm, again, I'm only speaking from my household because my wife works there. But there, there is policies set right now and I can't read them verbatim, but it states that if you're, you don't get mileage to your first client if they're in the city that you reside. So, if my wife has her first client in here in town, she doesn't get mileage from, from our house to, you know, wherever it is in Eldora, but she would receive it if she went so many miles away from Eldora, i.e. I will.
And all I'm saying is what I heard at the meeting-
Right.
-that we were spending hundreds of dollars weekly on mileage and every mile adds up to the bottom line of that profit loss statement. So, I, I'm just following up to see if that got taken care of.
Yep, we talked to the individuals that we were questioning their mileage.
Yeah.
But mileage is going to be, I mean, we cover a large area. We go all the way to zeroing to, yeah.
You're going to come to the office here so they can collect mileage-
Right.
-to go to the northwest corner of Harden County, that, there's something wrong there. That, that's kind of exploiting-
Yeah. And it wasn't a new problem, but it's, but it's been addressed.
Okay.
Yep.
So, everybody said their piece?
Could the council hang around for just a minute and we'll talk after this?
Do we need, oh, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, sure. We're going to stay tomorrow. Well, we're not, I was talking just to the council. I want my council meeting to be open for just another couple minutes, is all.
But the others can adjourn.
Right. I just want to make sure you didn't turn that one.
Okay, sure. Go for it.
I have two adjourns at Greenbelt Home Care.
Okay, on favor. Aye.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, everybody, for coming. Good to meet you. Darryl Meyer?